Are being a hybrid meeting tonight, so we have some people in the hall and we are broadcasting on Zoom as well. So just bear with us for any technical difficulties. And I ask that everybody please rise for the presence of the Legion.
Legion to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the board had a chance to review the amendments from the June 17th meeting.
Yes.
I make a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll second.
Second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody, has everybody had the chance to read the July 1st meeting minutes? I'll offer a motion to accept those minutes. Second by Rob on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On slash Woodbury Commons, this is for proposed changes to previously approved AIP for Farm Suite 448. Said property is located between the Woodbury Common Shopping Center and is built on the Village Woodbury Backmap in section 225, 1-70.2 and 225. I see John Villapiano from Commons. Who else is representing you guys? Just John tonight or? Can you unmute him too? Can you unmute John?
I was able to do it.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chair and Board members. John Villapiano, Vice President Development, Premium Outlet Partners LP, owner-operator Woodbury Common. We appreciate the opportunity to present this project to the board and the public for the public hearing. With us representing Farm, the tenant making the improvements to Suite 448, is Garrett Singer of Garrett Singer Architects, and I'm not sure whom else he has on his side, but I believe he is on, I'm not sure through which medium, so. Garrett?
You can just unmute himself.
Alright. Alright, well, if, I guess just in the interest of time, Mr. Chair, I guess I can just maybe run through the presentation?
That's fine, that'd be great.
Okay. So what you have, or what the proposed changes at Woodbury Common are all on the exterior. This was a project that, that was presented to the board and approved last year. The, what is, what the current application in front of the board considers more of a reallocation of colors and materials. They are swapping out what was approved were green metal awnings, and we're now going more with a canvas awning, similar to what you see elsewhere throughout Woodbury Common. There, there, these changes are driven by the tenants' updated branding effort. Along with those, the signage that was considered in front by the board previously is being modified, but only for content. In terms of size and location, everything more or less remains the same. So any questions, we would be happy to take them.
Thank you, Justin. Do you have any questions? Rob, you have any questions?
I'm, I'm good.
Do you have any questions?
No, we reviewed this last week.
There were no questions because this is the public hearing. Any members of the public that wish to speak on this application? I'm guessing that's nobody, nobody, no one know, and nothing in chat or anything, right? I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Second question, all in favor?
Aye.
That was Tom and John. John, thank you. John, I missed your report, I'm sorry. I don't think you have much though, right on this?
No, we, we don't. At the last meeting, the changes to the colors were summarized by the board. You asked us to confirm that the location of the sign on the rear elevation was visible from 32. We did do that. The only thing we're asking the applicant to do at this point is confirm that the, the sign on the table, so that you can make sure that it's in the approved plan and tenant's sign criteria. Other than that, we don't really have any issues.
Thank you. Any questions for John? Rick?
We provided a, provided a resolution, resolution here duration in connection with the comment by John. In special condition number three, it says, we shall provide proof of compliance prior to the satisfaction of the village engineer. If you know what is difficult is you will get a plant signing letter from H2M indicating when it's ready for our signature writing.
You know, I don't have. Anybody have any questions for Rick? Tom or Joe, any questions for it?
No, sir.
No.
I will go ahead and move to the motion of approval. Just starting off with the specific conditions. All applicable conditions attached to site plan, special permit, and architecture review approvals from 1997 to the present for Premium Outlet Partners LP slash Chelseaa D.C. Real Department LP, so as CPG Partners LP, also referred to in the statement of Woodbury Commons Premium Outlet, and any subsequent amendments made to are hereby incorporated into this resolution and are to remain in full force and effect, and that this approval is subject to and conditioned upon satisfaction of those conditions as given the set forth at length hearing. Anybody from the planning board, any questions? During construction, safety shall be sole responsibility of Premium Outlet Partners LP, and contracted with all appropriate safety measures provided. These features should also be satisfied to the satisfaction of the building department for public safety. Any questions? Proposed signage shall be accordance with the approved tenant sign criteria. The applicant shall provide proof of compliance prior plant signing to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Proposed outdoor dining area shall be kept in neat and orderly condition. Trash refuse receptacle shall be emptied as required for neat order of sight with adequate amount of refuse and at a minimum at forty pieces a day. Chairs and tables, umbrellas, and any other equipment or furniture not altered down shall be securely positioned but not in use in after hours to prevent displacement due to poor weather conditions that may result in property damage or injury. Tom or Joe, you guys, any questions?
No, sir.
On the resolution? Okay, so can I get a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion.
We'll take the motion by Sandy, second by Joe Bellino. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That was unanimous. Alright, thank you very much, John.
Thank you to the board and to everyone involved for hearing the resolution the night of the public hearing. Appreciate it. Stay healthy and I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Next up, on the agenda. Woodbury Villas, review applicant, application to amend previously approved project or phasing plan. The applicant requests amendment to expand the numbers certificate of occupancies issued prior to the installation of graphics at the intersection of Dunenberg and Integer Road. Said subdivision is located on Dunenberg Road and is also known as the Woodbury Village Backmap in section 225, block one, lot 3.22 at all. So I believe Stephen and Eli, you're here with this application tonight, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good evening and thank you for joining us virtually tonight.
Thanks for having me virtually from down here in Florida. It's a little crazy and I'm not going anywhere, so appreciate the ability to do this virtually. So I would like to bring you all up to speed on what is happening and address the various matters that Dennis had articulated in his comment letter. So the first thing I wanted to discuss is raised on page two of his letter, where he discusses the discrepancy between certificates of occupancy that we had numbers about and what the village had regarding numbers. Ellie has for you an updated map that has the revised, that is consistent with a revised list that we received from the building department yesterday. And he has that map if he's physically there in the room. Is he there now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, he just walked in.
Okay, great. So he can give you that list, but we have confirmed and had it match with the building department's records of 163 certificates of occupancy that were issued. And the map that Ellie will hand out is dated 3/17/20 with a revised date of 7/14/20. The next item that I wanted to go over with you is regarding the traffic analysis. There was a question. You want me to wait?
Yeah, give me one second. Just seeing, you know, we'll look at it tonight, but it can't be considered any decisions we make because it was just given us, given us to this.
Understood, and I think the only action, Mr. Chairman, to have occurred tonight anyway is to hopefully set the matter for public hearing, so there would be no decisions expected tonight regardless. Just for informational purposes, so that hopefully we can show you that we're ready for a public hearing. The second item is in respect of questions relating to the traffic analysis that had been provided previously. There was a question as to what the date was of the counts, and we have received an email from the traffic engineers office confirming that the date of the intersection counts was on February, excuse me, February 22nd of 2017. And we'll also be submitting to you tonight both that email as well as the corrected letter from Mazer that includes the February 22nd date. The date of the letter is still March 11, 2020, but they've simply reissued it with the correct date of February 22nd in the second paragraph. And I believe Ellie has that material for you as well. Okay. One other note on this is that we're, we're a little confused about the traffic count request regarding both entrances to WP3. I believe the traffic counts and everything for the entrances were done in the traffic study. So we believe that you have everything that you need in that regard. The other observation that's made regarding traffic is whether there has been a traffic increase of significance since 2017. And Dennis refers to intervening events, including the completion of construction of the exit 131 improvements. And my understanding is, especially having driven through that intersection more than a few times, is that I think if anything, traffic volumes, traffic congestion has been alleviated. The next thing I wanted to turn to briefly is the status of the road work itself. And quite a bit has happened since we were last before you in March, literally today. Anthony Trociano from the Orange County DPW sent an email to Ellie in which he states that he needs disability insurance. And then he says, quote, "We have everything else we need to issue the permit." And he then requests confirmation for time and day of a pre-construction meeting, which would be either tomorrow or on Friday. So all of the prerequisites now have finally been met for the work to be permitted and to begin, subject to these last minor items. The disability insurance has been provided today, albeit a pre-construction meeting tomorrow. We expect the permit to then be issued immediately thereafter and work to begin very shortly. So the work, I believe the estimate is still approximately six to eight weeks to complete this work. And so there isn't going to be very much of an overlap in time, assuming we have a public hearing quickly between when these certificates of occupancy would be issued and when frankly, the whole thing would be moot because we would have completed the work anyway. So that just gives you a sense practically. And on that, I would also add, Rick and I spoke yesterday, and I promised to send him documents, which unfortunately I couldn't get to until just a short time ago because I had to take my wife in for some medical examinations. And, but the documents that I sent are the documents that are the background documents for the permitting. Orange County agreement with the developer, the towns agreement that to dedicate land, all of which was requested by the county. And we got that all together, the county was satisfied, and then you got Mr. Trociano's email from today. Rick asked for that information and it was provided shortly before the meeting today. So I think we believe at least that these are the matters that at least get us to a place where we have given you this information. I think that's sufficient for a public hearing to be scheduled on this. And then I would like to, if I could, address one other matter, which is Dennis notes on the first page of his comment letter that we had previously requested to rephase things, a transfer of 18 lots from phase one to phase six, and a transfer of five lots from phase six. Pulled back on that. What we would like to do, if possible, is just to resurrect one of those, which is the first one, the transfer of the lots from phase one to phase six. Ellie has the maps on those, and we've confirmed, and it is acknowledged by Dennis as well in footnote one of his, of his comment letter, that these were items that were previously approved by the board. This particular switch in phasing was previously approved. Complete the process, therefore the approval lapsed. And we're simply looking to propose that single, resurrect, I should say, as part of our application, that single transfer of 18 lots from phase one to phase six. And Ellie has the, the maps for you to show exactly what that would be. Nothing more than reapproving what had been approved previously. We don't know if a public hearing is required on that. If it is, hopefully, since it's a relatively straightforward matter, perhaps it could be included in a, in next, the, the public hearing that's, that would be set on the certificate of occupancy issue. So those are the matters that I had to go over with you and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Sandy, you have anything for the applicant?
I don't think that they're, he's had his map on the face. I think Steve just said that you were going to hand out some map with respect to the face.
Yes.
You can hand it out tonight, it's not going to be retrieved tonight, it's going to have to be submitted to the building department tomorrow morning. Make sure you follow up and submit it tomorrow morning to the building department.
I just want to know currently, how many houses are actually occupied now? Not seen, or have actually people living in them? Hold the house up, I ask you. How many, what's the number of houses?
163.
163. Has that changed since the traffic study in March of 2020?
No.
Has that changed?
Did you mark them? Oh, that, sorry. My fault. Alright, John?
Again, they touched on a number of the items noted. I guess what the board really needs to determine is, do they want to consider these additional 30 CEOs and go forward with the public hearing? If, if that's the case, in light of the, the information that was submitted tonight with respect to the traffic accounts, we are going to need to get a traffic account as well from board to look at that if we do go forward. And we'll have to look at the phasing maps to consider their other requests. You know, other than that, it's, you know, it's, it's really up to the board. It sounds like they're making progress on, on getting the, the traffic light situation completed. If they do indeed have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, that's great. But it is still going to be a six to eight week process. So. Yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty much it. I think all we really wanted to, um, talk to John for this one.
Does anybody have any questions for Tom or John? Johnson, just pull your mic close to your stool.
I guess the third bullet under B.
Right.
From the information we have on the farm watch to be revised on the applicant's nap. So what were you saying about those, those lots? I mean, they, they, on the map that we were given, they were covered in all different areas. So between what Mr. Barshov said, is, is this not one of these maps, through that one? We are.
Well, presumably, we'll have to look at it, but that's, there was discrepancies from the previous maps that were submitted for review. So we'll have to at least make sure that they cleared that up.
Yes, that, that's my understanding that those map, that this map does address those discrepancies.
On page three, where we talked about the standard conditions, the soil erosion and sediment control and drainage. Now, I mean, all weekend I was being emailed and texted about, you know, the rain and the sediment that was coming down, and so what can be done about that? I mean, it doesn't seem like this, it's being complied with now.
Well, there, there can be enforcement through the building department. I believe that may be being considered at this point. But the reality is that we, we just have to continue to inspect that for storms and make sure they're doing everything they can to prevent significant sediment runoff. You know, we get these storms now, and it seems like we had over the weekend, and unfortunately, they had just apparently finished a bunch of new bonds for some of the new homes that had all of that washed out. And they also had some piping issues in one area that we, we are inspector noted that they had to fix, which was contributing to the flooding problem.
So I mean, are, are, have violations finished yet, or where does this stand?
We, as, from, from our standpoint, we, we can only know what's not in compliance. The, the violations would have to be, would have to come through the building department.
I do have one other, it's more of a housekeeping question. For Woodbury Villas, with everything we've been given, we've now seen three different addresses for Woodbury Villas. We've got 41 Lucio Drive in Spring Valley. We've got 199 Lee Avenue Suite 735 in Brooklyn. And then we have, I think, one in Woodbury Villas. So which, I mean, which is the correct address? We should be working on one address, right?
Yeah. The applicant should have one address that the village needs to correspond with.
Mr. Barshov, do you have the address?
Ellie can confirm which address should be used, and if he does not know, I'll be able to find out for. Ellie can confirm which address should be used and if he does not know, I'll be able to find out for you immediately. I don't have my, unfortunately, working remotely, I don't have my billing file with me as to which address we use. So I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of you, perhaps Ellie can answer that question for you.
Four line old passes. That's a that's a physical office in the.
I don't think that's, you gotta push the big black button, you'll get a green, you get a green light.
That's the one on the bottom.
Give me now.
There you go. Alright, so Steve, just it's a housekeeping thing, but going forward, all of the correspondence should have the same addresses on it in consistency, at least.
We'll we'll make sure that that happens.
Did you have any other questions, Sandy?
Not right now.
Um, I'll have to defer to Dennis on that much.
Hey, everybody, I'm actually having a really hard time hearing you guys, so I'm not sure if somebody could repeat the question.
Uh, the question.
You're referring to the part, these are standard conditions from fire resolutions, is that right? Is this section three C?
Yep.
What was the question specifically, other than do you not think that that should be carried forward?
No, if we can get listing it, what roads? Do we know what roads are finished and what roads are.
Okay, we'll look into that for you and provide that list for the next meeting.
I think there's a map that should be drawn because I have notes from our last meeting, there were some sidewalk questions. Because with the phasing, some houses were built on one side, but the sidewalks were on the other side. And I think we're.
I think the applicant at one time in their original submission was trying to accomplish three things. One of them was the relocation of a sidewalk, which I believe they've removed from their current application.
Okay. But the the phasing, switching. And the and the roads. Have seemed to be jumbled. Also, I have notes about like a clubhouse and some other some other work that's supposed to be done on another phase. That's going to be done in this phase, now that the traffic light's going in?
That's an app, an applicant question.
That's a question that I have the ability to answer, Ellie would have to answer that, he knows those matters better than I.
I think the magic number was like, I'm going off of some chicken crack note from the meeting in March.
I I can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that anything that we're proposing here changes. What's to be constructed otherwise in the project as a whole. This is just simply to be able to get existing buildings who which are which are ready for certificates of occupancy. To simply have them issued, the only hang up being the presence of the light.
Right. There was the the light was the main issue last time we met. And when we talked, there seemed to be a lot of confusion about what was complete, what wasn't complete, and when was it going to be complete? And I think we asked for maps to help clarify that because the maps that we had were different colors and different line weights. And the language between maps weren't matching up. Am I the only one that remembers that, or am I confusing this with something else?
No, Joe, I think you're right, and I think since the applicant was, he assumed no other maps aside from the building permit and CEO map needed to be issued. But now that they are proposing or requesting that those one. What was the second?
That's the transfer of.
They would definitely need to provide those clarified clarified maps, in my opinion.
The map that we submitted back in March, the question is about the roads, if you look at the map, and it has a key on the top, which says completed roads. All the roads that are in the gray is roads that are completed.
Okay. And what you say completed, they have the finished layer of mekadam on top of them?
It's not, it's not, when I say finished, means that that phase was completed and signed off by the building department. It is, it does not have the final code on it. Because that, you know, one, we have destruction trucks coming, which is very bad part, so it does not have the final code, but we put it in the S code. With the building department for the final.
Okay. Thank you. Did you hear Eli's answer, Joe?
Uh, a little bit, I think, I think in general, it it doesn't matter what the traffic light, because that's the main issue, but.
Right.
The the phasing, phasing, the other piece to this, I don't think we can move on unless we have up to date maps, in my opinion.
They they dropped them off tonight, so the building department will officially receive them tomorrow, so that if you you. And you're, next time you check the mailbox.
The map that's on the road was part of the.
Right, no, but the the phasing maps are what we give to us tonight. So technically, just with with the way the process works, we didn't actually get these. We'll we'll get them tomorrow to be considered, it's just, it's how we do the whole process.
Just what, is there any question, explanation?
Joe, Tommy, do you have any questions?
Oh, so I'm good right now.
Thank you. Rick?
I have a couple of things. One, in the traffic analysis by Kimberly Horn, the traffic consultant for the Plenary. In February twenty eighth, they indicated that they did not have the traffic count dates or the time periods. Of the major report that was dated December twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen. And one of that provided, and also wanted to know, on that date, if these traffic counts were taken by major. Some sort of representation of how many units approved, how many units were occupied at the time of the traffic. So that from a traffic perspective, they can indicate that, well. We can do the math with a hundred and sixty-two units based upon this, whereas if only a hundred and fifty units were occupied, that would be a different calculation. So they said that that information was not in the major report. I know Steve, you said that you thought that it was, but we have a traffic consultant said that it was not in that report. So I think that at a minimum, the Plenary needs to have that information, that is, the traffic count dates. Time periods counted and a tabulation of accounts, this is set forth in Kimberly Horn's traffic analysis dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. And then also, you need to verify the number of occupied units at the time of those counts. That's the one thing I have, the other thing I have is which we expect to. The public hearing, there is a public hearing that is required for both aspects of their application, both for the adjusted rephasing. As well as for the adjustment of the condition concerning the hundred and sixty-two. Units that can be occupied before the traffic light gets installed. So if you want to set a public hearing, a public hearing needs to be set on both matters. Now, of course, if they don't have enough information to you in time for the public hearing, public hearing can always be continued. But in my opinion, if you set the public hearing, it ought to be for both topics.
And it's what, forty-five days from the close of the public hearing, we have to, an action, a decision, or is it as soon as?
No, there's no specific deadline for the amendment of the subject.
Okay, thank you.
If I may. You were referencing the letter from the traffic consultant, February, we have submitted, I don't know if it answers this question, but we submitted in March. A new letter from major dated March eleventh.
I don't think I have that. You said, you could find that. You submitted that to the building department. I don't know if anybody else has that, you do, okay. So you have that information, presumably, I didn't have it written. It's submitted tonight.
No, that that was just, I submitted it in March, it was just.
About the March, the March commission?
Yes, it was just a question about when the date was done, so that's what they did. Well, I submitted it in March, yes.
Well, what was requested was the traffic count date, the time periods counted, the tabulation of the count.
I don't know, it's in there, I know in March we submitted it, so that's.
It sounds like at the very least, we're going to have to have a third traffic consultant, because there was a conflict with the two. You're using review and come back with the report, at least that's my feeling, I don't know, everybody else feels. And Tommy. That we're going to need to bring in a third traffic consultant to review the updated traffic account data to, because we can't use Kimberly, we can't use major because of the conflict, so. I'd like to tie it all together, I just I I just know how busy that intersection is, so we're going to definitely want to have the traffic consultant look it again. Is there any other information the board would want to see?
So we can say bringing around a third traffic consultant just to analyze, not to do some traffic stuff.
Right, to analyze.
I I think what's what's needed, I think what Chairman's asking for is that you had a thorough review of it by Kimberly Horn. And but they said we're missing certain data, and I think what the new traffic consultant would do is simply look at that data. And look at Kimberly Horn's report, major's report, and then either confirm or not confirm that. The traffic count dates and the representation as to how many units are done. Makes sense from the traffic analysis done by Kimberly.
I mean, we don't even have a traffic consultant, we a report can't answer a question, so, you know, we have questions on the traffic, so. All right. I'll work with you, Rick, to find a consultant.
Yeah, I brought you with the, I think it was three names, that I had obtained. So we just have to follow.
Is there anything else that we want from this this applicant?
I'm assuming that this.
Well, yes, Delton. Well, of course, we'll have to have our normal reports from our consultants and. That's it. We could set the public hearing date if the board wants to and then continue it, or we could wait until. We have the reports from the Dennis Lundy's office and whoever the other traffic consultant is, that's the board's pleasure.
I would like to have all of the information.
I think we should wait for the additional information also.
Okay. Joe, Lena?
Yeah, I agree, additional information.
Okay, all right, so as soon as it gets to us, as soon as we can get it back on the agenda and get the public hearing for you guys. Well, as soon as we, our, the maps that you handed us tonight. Our and our and our village engineer has to look at those maps and coincide with the phase request changes that you're looking for. We have to have the traffic consultant look over Kimberly Horton's and Mazor's report with the updated data.
That's that's the 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 traffic thing is literally a month.
Right, but there was a conflict with the traffic consultant, so there's no traffic consultant right now, so we have to have.
And I thought Mazor, did Mazor refuse themselves as well?
Mazor had to refuse themselves.
Yeah, so we don't really have a traffic consultant either, right?
They, not at this point in time, and I don't know whether or not they need one, so it depends upon. What the new traffic consultant said, the new traffic consultant could align that with the new data. And given Kimberly Horton's conclusions, that everything is in order.
But if they, if they, if the new traffic consultant were to have questions about. Mr. Mazor or the Mazor report, who did I go to, they don't go to Mazor, do they?
They would ask the applicant, the applicant would have to figure out some way to answer those questions, answer one question, so there are some traffic questions. That may not need a traffic consultant to answer. Some may, so we have to wait to see what those questions were and determine whether or not they they needed an expert to answer.
I don't know if this will help anybody, but the the March eleventh letter with the directed date that was submitted today. Does refer to the time when the when the traffic data was obtained, the time of day as well as the date. I think the only information that Rick referred to that is missing is the number of occupied units at that time. Which we're happy to provide based on the number of certificates of occupancy that were issued at that time. Truthfully. I don't think that that number is likely to make it in terms of the overall traffic information. And the only purpose for the traffic study is for you to have available to you information that would cause you to believe that there's a serious traffic problem that would occur. From approving the issuance of certificates of occupancy before this traffic light is put in. So I think when you look at it in the big picture of what is to actually be reviewed and analyzed by a third traffic consultant. It's a fairly narrow question on the basis of data that's already been obtained and been submitted. And not likely to take very long, be very complicated, or frankly, not likely to yield anything earth shattering. So my hope would be, especially given that. We have a road work that's about to begin, we're kind of moving into a phase where if we don't get this at least set for a public hearing. That the construction is likely to overtake any of all of this anyway. So my hope would be that, given the small magnitude of the traffic issue that's out there. That you would consider or reconsider and perhaps set this for a public hearing, because I think none of this data is likely to be significant.
That is up to the purview of the board, and if the board doesn't feel they have the information to move forward. I mean, I can't force the board to make a motion, or some member of the board to make a motion to set a public hearing.
Nor can I, I can only ask nicely.
Yes. So if a member of the board wants to set the public hearing, that's up to them, I think we've heard from the board, they don't want to set the public hearing tonight. So if a member of the board wants to set the public hearing, that's up to them, I think we've heard from the board, they don't want to set the public hearing tonight. Or somebody. Speak up if anybody wants to, I just happen to have the computer in front of me tonight. Nope, Joe, Tom?
I understand what he's saying, but I, I, I think that setting the public hearing is not the right move at this time, so that's what I'm saying.
I agree, I think we need some further information to say.
All right. Are there any other questions or concerns on this application? Joe, Tom?
Nope.
No.
I have nothing further.
Okay. All right, thank you everybody for the time for this tonight.
Thank you for the courtesy of allowing me to appear virtually, I appreciate it very, very much.
You're welcome, sir, have a good night and hopefully you stay well.
Thank you, thank you.
Not winning anything from you.
We're waiting for you to submit these maps to the building department tomorrow. And also you had submitted the corrected date, I guess. That has to be submitted to the building department tomorrow as well.
But other than that, no, just that they gotta stamp them in so they can be official. Congregation Ova Shalom, review additional documentation submitted for proposed conversion of a portion of an existing family dwelling to a shore with site improvements. Said property is located at 230 Scottamunk Road in Island Mills, and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Sections 247, Lot 3 and 4. Hold on, I gotta call the applicants. Hi, Nathan? It's Chris from the planning board, how are you? All right, you're good, sir. Okay, the applicants are on their way in. Get like a bell or something like that, make it really official. We just have to speak up because we're, with the audio stuff being rebroadcast, so. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Evening everyone, glad to meet you from my colleague's chair. Everybody, again, everybody. Well, this, I haven't been here in a while. We were last here in February. We had done a little bit of this. Specifically, the requirement of landscaping and landscaping. Since that time, we have submission in February, March. So I just think it drew, we did change on the plan. By the park, this is very planned, but this is kind of a road. There's these five spaces here.
John, why can't you say, you said, and you said that they'll change?
Yeah, because your initial, the traffic consultant initially wanted, I believe it was second space, this is here, you want that? Have to go on further with the board. And then further on that, you even talked about the landscaping, and you have gone over that. Pretty good detail, I was really concerned about screening from either sides, because we're all in this semicircle area. So it was this location here in order to have front landscaping block here. So we added this cluster of shrubbed trees here, we added another here along the entrance. And then we are landscaping the front of the dwelling. And then we added shrubs and trees on this side, over here, the rear of the apartment. So basically, we're trying to shield the parking lot on the front, and then, let's say the second front. And there were some other slight modifications to the plan that we've done, more technical detail, we went through drainage. We do connect some, some of the skids there, some air that we're on now. I think at this point in time, we've addressed the major issues that we were discussing. And we left off that we were submitting the ARB application for this, which I believe was submitted. We do have some renderings tonight of that, and then we, we also have the materials. For closely building itself to the end. And that's where we're at. Hopefully tonight, we're looking to possibly several different directions. That was a direction that we're going to have.
Thank you for coming back with the, I know the landscaping was a very big part of what this was looking for, so I do appreciate you guys trying to get as much as that in, and I think the rest of the board does, shielding this successfully done, so thank you for working there. With that, we'll go to John?
Yes, as Mr. Queen had noted, the last time there here, the two main issues that are being discussed were the parking and the landscaping. We provided a comment memo, which is the same memo we prepared back at large, that was changed since then. We do discuss the changes to the parking, we defer the traffic consultant on that. And we discussed the landscaping changes. And then there's a whole lot of, you know, pretty, pretty minor, but plenty of engineering details that we asked for, that I'd rather not go through. It's, it's, there's nothing in there that, that we feel they can't address. So the board is, is okay with the revisions. The parking and the landscaping, the next step would be to bring this to a public hearing.
Any questions for John?
I do for John, and I guess it's all of us. As far as the water, the, we got the letter from the Woodbury Heights Water Company, and they, they say that the water increase is only going to be 76 gallons, from 440 to 516. Now, I thought in the, in the lower section, where the midas are, aren't there showers and toilets and? And they're saying only 76 additional gallons a day from all of that?
Yes, the way, the original 440 was with the residential house, so it's not better. So it's, the way you do residential houses is 110 gallons per day. So let's say here's the 440. Can we move on to anything outside of residential houses? Charts and stuff that the health department and the EDC provide. Church slash, there is a specific hydraulic volume per person, you can ask for per person. And then you, I think it's three gallons per day per person, and then you add, you add another 10 gallons, the showers. So we add, I think 13 gallons per person times every number of gallons that we add, that's how you can provide on the 516.
13 gallons per person?
Yeah, I think we've.
But if this, if this, if it's seat 72, so.
You have to remember that the showers are only used by the males. So a portion of it, or children, we already take into account, and it's not the full 72 that use full 13 gallons.
Okay, but, okay.
It's, 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 I think we have a calculation.
I know we had a breakdown of seats for men and children.
Yeah, I think it's 16.
I think it's a narrow, we worked out.
I, I don't know, I just, I just thought that that water usage, that increase in water usage being what?
No, it's, that's, we use the same ones that we use for others.
Right, but in this case, I'm, when you do, you know, the letter that you presented from Woodbury Heights State Water Company, my question is, if it, say it works for fire, it needs the 516 gallons per day, are they going to have a problem with it? And if there was some kind of problem with the approval that we're getting, then what?
Well, I think Woodbury Heights States was just basing it on the calculations in the plan that we submitted.
Right.
So I, I mean, as for the water usage towards them, it's like, it's like anything else. The house, estimating it 140 gallons, there could be days where it uses more, there could be days where it uses less.
Right, but is it just a private water? Are they private?
I believe there is. Transportation Corporation does.
So what I'm saying is, I don't know, for some reason, say it was 1,000 gallons, 800 gallons. Are they going to be okay with it? And if they, if they weren't, and they said, no, we're, we're not going to give you permission to use that amount of water, then what happens? Do you have this in your thinking?
I do, practically, I don't think things ever get to this point, but as a private water company, if they were ever to say that using too much, we don't have enough, if they're right at the level, this is the last ounces that they have. And they said, you're not going to get any more than X. I don't know how they could control that other than simply turning it off, saying you can't get anything. If they did that, they couldn't occupy the building at all, if you don't have any running water. And that would then become an issue for Gary, that you wouldn't allow them to stay in the house with any water. But water companies have other obligations, and so that they would get to a point, because the estimated usage went over by a factor of 20, 30%, it is not, fully doesn't matter, as long as they have it, they will provide it, and they'll just pay for it. This isn't, you know, they're not going to give a cartel option, no matter how much you do, they want to have it, to give it to the best, and that's the fine home, that they have no objection to the increase, open above what they ordered, that they would supply. So I think this is a sufficient representation for the, for the water, right? I do think, John, if you could supply it in a very simple tabular format as to how you did those calculations, and submit that to the building department for the person.
Yeah, I think, I think we're in good place.
Well.
I have a question, yeah. Dennis said in his memo on March 12, you were.
That's not in here. Help me speak.
No, Robert, yes.
I thought you were.
You're a very drollist now, huh?
My apologies, John.
Did you hear my question?
No.
Dennis sent this memo on March 12 this year, that the storage administrator has not made comments yet about the switch situation, did we see anything yet this morning? I haven't seen anything.
I haven't been, not received anything yet, and I'm not sure if it was just the timing of when we submitted the request and everything that happened, but we'll follow that up with it.
I think he said the same thing about the stormwater management department as well.
Oh, yes.
But it is supposed to come on a separate public.
Any other questions?
Oh, wait, I don't know how they have.
Tom or Joe?
No, sir.
Joe?
When we, excuse me, when we talked about this last time, we, there were some questions about like the second floor and the occupancy of the building, I don't know if we can chime in on that now or not, unless it's just site plan.
Yes, we did speak about that, I believe, in our CGS. The applicant approached both the project architect and the building department. They did a cursory review of the plan, and they did not see any issues with the current layout and the code. Therefore, as you have a design or code in mind.
Anything else, Joe?
No, I think landscaping and the lighting are what we were talking about last time. I, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Rick?
That's it, don't, you know, they need a public hearing. The secret has not been completed at a prior meeting. You have part one and part two of the EAF, can we see part two back in March? And the board reviewed that, the question of a different situation, my traffic, I don't know whether or not that is. Okay, so if you look into that, what, what happened was, the board said it's going to re-review part two of the EAF and later revisions to the plans, and also after the public hearing. So I don't think you need to do anything further with secret, but if John, if you could look into, if there was any other traffic information, that was the question. And if you're unclear about it, you could try to search the minutes and notes to see what specifically it is. So from my perspective, I think that it's ready for a public hearing, but that's up to the board. And I believe it has the information necessary to go to the code.
The public hearing would just be for site plan, we need a set one for ARP, right? Or can we do both in the same?
Do both the same.
Do both in the same, right?
Yeah, you have the information on ARP, I believe.
Yeah, I know we have renderings. Was it?
Um, was it, the last ARB application, was that from March 4? Because I thought Dennis had said that in the report as well, that it was completed because the manufacturer, all this stuff was.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so we actually broke the shield tonight.
All right, so same thing as the last applicant, drop it off at the building department in the morning, and they can stamp it in, and they'll, they'll give it, they'll give it to us. Let me just, John, before you jump there.
Yep.
Site plan wise, is the board comfortable where we are as far as what's decided by?
There was one question that I had, and that was all in Dennis's report, as far as that front walkway. That front walkway is the same, right?
Yes, and I'll talk to, I'll, I'll speak to Dennis about it. The A D A code is a little, I'll say, very gray in this area. We're providing handicap spaces on the site. We have a, and a group route on the site. This is a secondary, I'll say, access. It's not, it doesn't have to be A D A compliant, because it doesn't lead to you to anywhere. It just leads to the road, there's no more sidewalk network connected to it. So right now, we have it running around six percent. We use the A D A code in terms of gray, but if I go over five percent, technically for A D A, we'd have to have railings on both sides. You, you really don't want to put railings on both sides of that, because it's, we want to keep the residential look, we'll say. So we don't want to come around a corner, and then you have this hundred-foot sidewalk with railings on both sides, you know, leading out, leading into the facility.
Right.
So I kept it at the six, because it also blends much better into the gray. In order to avoid the railings completely, to get to the A D A, I would need to be a five. And that would require a longer sidewalk and more time. So we're balancing the two. The code is gray, because it's not a primary access, it's not the A D A access or accessible route to the site. If there was a public sidewalk out there, then it's clear that it would have to happen. But since it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't happen.
I would, I hope they can keep it that way. I mean, I think a big steel railing would look very unsightly there.
Right, but is that the Dennis, of Dennis'?
I'm gonna, I'm going to speak to him. I looked at the code today, I'll speak to Dennis about it. In the worst case scenario, we just have to make it a little longer to get to five percent. I, I want to avoid the railings, I don't want. And I think if, if, I know we can get to the five percent to avoid the railings, then this plan basically stays exactly.
Okay. Uh, Tom or Joe, on site plan, are there any other questions strictly on site plan?
Nope.
It was kind of, Dennis said that we had a black chain link fence, thought that aesthetically, that we might be very pleased with.
Is that on top of the tank wall?
Yeah, that's it. We had, um, discussed that at the last meeting. We have objections, we're also shielding that with, with trees on top.
Is it the final looking tank wall design again? I thought that was.
Yeah, typically, we don't do the final design, that goes to the building department for construction.
I think what our request, though, was with the chain link fence, was to add the additional plantings around the chain link fence. Which I think they did on the, on the two sides. But I, I remember the conversations, I know we all talked about seeing this big black fence on that place. I think that was where we came up to, if we could add additional plantings to kind of make that fence disappear as much as possible.
And there's also a comment about the air conditioning unit here, like for this, and in the traffic area.
Yeah, the, there's an existing air conditioning unit here. And when we redo the main entrance here, we propose to relocate it here. It's outside, and then walkway, it's next to the building, it's close enough to the location, that we didn't have to basically repipe everything in the house with air conditioning. We feel that it's out of the way, it's next to the path, it's not in the way of the path. I mean, I think Dennis is just mentioning that it's, it's near the path of walking. We could look at another location, uh, but it all depends on what has to be done internally. Rewire.
So any other questions on the site plan? What's any?
Sorry.
No, I just, wanted to just make sure we button this up before we move to.
Oh, I know. And it's probably very common, but I can't figure that. How can we get from their network to their? Do they go outside, or does it go, is there inside?
Teleporters.
Hi, Major Druck. So the last requirement is clearly a bit which process that work pressure. What is the requirement, don't even have to pay a technical checks, you say, only on Friday nights. When they have to use their electricity, but they go home, they go in. It's like a gateway to the.
So they don't have to use the night by night?
No, they, they go home.
Okay.
They come to, they come to. It's not, they, they, two uses of the night.
If they want to go, they would have to go outside, go inside, go up there.
Yeah, well, well, let's go, do you want to have electricity there? No, I have it.
Okay.
Like, if you go home, that's the way it's wired.
Yeah, I just was wondering.
Yeah, well, it's, we need to check.
Listen?
I, I have a question for you, my hand is raised. Can you see it?
Yes, I see it. Just smacked me in the back.
All right. So when we talked about this last time, Rob brought up the, the railing, but we also talked about the retaining wall. And the, the width and the excavation required for the retaining wall adjacent to the, the property line. And if you look at your map, where it says plastic fence on the, on the neighbor's lot on the upper portion there. I don't know how that work is done while staying on the property. Because if you look at the typical detail, which I think is really opposite of what exists. The, the footing itself is five feet wide. And then that, your excavation is five feet deep, so you need to go back. It feels like, well, the short answer is, I don't think you can build that there.
The wall thickness shown there is five feet. And then we are five feet off the property. So on the front of the wall to the property line, we have ten feet.
Your answer, Joe?
I did, I don't know if I agree with it.
Uh, unfortunately, that's one of those things, I think, uh, we're going to have to leave in Gary's hands when the, if the site gets approved, that they don't, um, hinder on anybody else's property.
Because essentially, this wall is a five, um, it's a forty-four inch block, it's kind of five foot there. And then there's a foot behind it for drinking.
Right.
So you're, you're really around six, which is about a four foot above or two feet from.
Any other questions with site plan? Once, twice? Are they on the phone? Once, right? Okay. There it is. I know you said you have the application, you'll submit those tomorrow, so we'll get you updated.
May I just chime in for one second, please?
Sure.
John, um, I'm not sure if you said in the beginning, um, when you were describing the application, whether or not you would address the comments in our memo. Um, I know some of them were related to the retaining wall and the construction, and the differences in the detail versus what was shown on the plan and discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah, I, yeah, she's talking to you.
Wrong, John.
The applicant, sorry.
Um, yeah, we, I don't have any objection to any of the comments, I think we've been.
Okay. We'll look forward to that new submission.
When will you be submitting that?
Well, we have the dream, it's just ready, um, probably submit by, by Friday. That's acceptable. Or just, I, I mean, it's something, or just.
Oh, we couldn't.
Alan?
Yes, I couldn't hear what was said.
This is Rick. Uh, would you, if it's submitted by trial, would that give you enough time to comment on it by the public hearing at the next meeting?
Yes, um, actually, I believe there's an extra week in between now and the next meeting, so we have three weeks, one, two, three. So actually, the applicant would have until next Wednesday, I believe, um, to submit the materials.
Okay. Thank you, Alan, for being so generous.
You're welcome.
The, the twelfth would be.
When's our next meeting?
The fifth. Fifth and the nineteenth.
All right, good. I'll be there.
That's my calendar as well. Okay, hold on, before we, let's, before we flip it out, ARB. Um, questions, comments, feedback?
Do we have all the information? I don't recall having all the information for the A R B.
We just have it. We, we have the rendering show, and the applicant is going to drop off the, um, the spec sheet tomorrow to the building department. That lists all the, they, they do have all of the, um, materials with them to see. And they're going to drop off the spec.
I only see the one elevation, weren't there going to be other elevations?
I have a March four submission that looks like it has the rear, the front, and one of the sides.
This is the corner shot of the front, and the sun's, we're looking at it back.
Okay.
This is the rear corner, looking at it. Okay, that's where the old, these two doors are the old garage, which would be in here.
I'm not, I'm, I'm okay with this, this is a team from the initial submissions that we've gotten from the applicant. To me, this looks much more like it fits into the community than the original submissions.
That, that changed, I mean, you don't really have a full view of the back cabin, but is it pretty much like the?
That, yes. They're the same, basically, that, that will be replacing the same location.
Okay, and that's, that a doors, this?
Yep, there's, there's a set of doors here, and a set of doors there. Basically, this door here, is this door here.
Right, and then there's a set that's like big?
Yeah, it's tucked in the corner. And then on the, I'll say the, the front is, this was the.
Was the front?
Front door, which would be. So that will just be closed off, your, you know, coming on the side.
Because, and the rest of the. Is, is there any way that the arches on the side? I've seen houses, they're a lot of. Well, I mean, as far as the houses that are in that development, they're, they're not like that. I mean, the front, the front was beautiful, I think, you know, that it's welcoming and everything, it's just that side. I wish it was less elaborate, I wish it was more just, just without those columns and the lights there. Are the lights there because of the walkway?
One, one of the issues that the planning department needs to deal with respect, with respecting our city, is the dissonance of a, of a particular structure in connection with that.
Will you take up the lights that satisfy you?
Um, not really, but I, I just, I would like to see it more like the other side of.
It seems to take a little more.
More so that it continues to look.
Look like the side.
Continue to look like a house. I understand the, the main entrance that you wanted to look like that, and, and I can accept that. I just don't, I really don't like the columns there. Just my opinion. Because I, I do think it's important that it isn't so really similar.
Do you like this, but it is.
I tend to agree, is there a way about? Are we leaving the columns without doing such, uh, major changes here?
I mean, just the stone work there is, I think, would be nice enough. Stone work, you know, around the window and everything.
I think we'll do the fire away as the stone, but.
That would be.
Okay. Oh, he's got his little four color quickie, quickie pen out.
The lights, the lights get faded still, well, we want.
Well, I think, are the lights there because of the, that walkway? There's the walkway beside there, right?
The walkway in front, these are, these are just.
Like a, with effect, light effect on the wall, it don't project light.
Out of shine on the stone.
So is that, it's not for any?
It's not for any sign, lighting, by any function. It's more of an architectural. Ba- basically, these lights, light goes up, light goes down.
Um, well, I mean, if they're not providing for anything, I would like to see that taken off as well. But again, I'm just wondering, how do you guys feel?
I didn't even think about that until you said it, so. I think other than that, I think it, I think with that one small change, I think overall, the, the house will, will look like it should some sort of.
It would look, I don't think it would be so similar.
No, I think you're right, Sandy, when I think about it. Other than that, I'm happy with what I see.
Yeah, I, I, it's not.
Tom or Joe?
Nope, I'm good. I tend to agree with Sandy on that side with those stones, with columns.
I have a question about the windows.
Go ahead, Joe.
So the, right now, I only have the front elevation, or, well, I believe the elevation that Sandy's talking about with the archway. And, um, there's a large, fixed, looks like there's three fixed windows with a large curved window on top. Are any of those windows operable, except the, are the two flanking windows operable, or is that all one fixed unit?
Talking, which, uh, which, which side do you want?
Yeah, what, yeah, what side do you want?
I'm looking at the side where it has the arch and the lights in the, in the stone.
The one that they just, I think the one, just the one they just agreed to cut out?
Yeah, well, those windows. Are they, are the windows, the windows are going to stay, aren't they?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so are the windows, there's a triple, there's a large fixed window, and then two would, could be casements on either side that are flanking that fix. Are those operable or not?
Are they stationary?
The, the three sides are never, yeah, they're operable, but the loud, the loud, the actual is not, or the square one is not.
So the arch is stationary in the.
The arch is stationary.
The arch is stationary, Joe, the other three are operable.
Well, well, the, the one in the center probably can't be operable. Is there a reason why the, the three double hungs are double hungs and not casements? To get rid of that? Is there any reason why they're double hungs and not casements? You're going to try to save the windows after fixing this whole house up, really?
So the straight answer is because of the.
Color out of the window frames, what color are the existing window frames?
The ones are black.
They're currently black, the existing window, the existing double hung windows are currently black?
They're currently white, but they're better, okay, so we're going to.
So, so, so these are, these double hungs are shown as black window frames. And. I would, I would recommend replacing the windows since you're upgrading this house this much. It would be a better building envelope. And you would, instead of putting double hungs in there, you put casements in there. That'd be my recommendation.
On the front?
On the front.
I don't, I think it would be a smart investment to replace the windows.
You'll be able to update the drawings, uh, by the due date, just so we have the public hearing. So anything else under ARB before?
If I may, since we're talking about ARB, I just wanted to, um, make a couple of points in our memo, just bring that to your attention. Um, since you're reviewing ARB and sort of the setting and, you know, an important consideration of this is the compatibility with the neighborhood. We noted in our memo, um, that the renderings provided don't show the retaining wall or the ramp in the front of the building. Um, and something that you may want to see with a future submission. And since it was discussed at the beginning of the meeting, um, the applicant had to describe to you, uh, which elevations, elevations were which. Uh, it might be helpful to have that on the renderings themselves, the titles. With dates, with dates. I apologize.
I'm sure he knows what it's going to look like, right? So with your next submission, you'll be able to. Or we can, or. That's what I was going to say, we could do. Or the 19th could be the next. Or we can do the 19th. If, if you need more time, we could set you for the 19th. Of August for your public hearing. Okay. All right, so all for motion. Okay, so all for motion for a site plan, a public hearing for site plan review and ARB at the August 19th. Thank you, my Rob. Any question, uh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, and then you'll drop off the completed ARB issue, right?
Yeah.
And then we will see you on the, what did I just say, 19th?
19th.
19th. Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Alright, almost there, everybody. Save the best for last, Mr. Mike Musso.
I don't know about the best for last, but thank you for the intro.
Come on, you paid me to be hype man. You slipped me 20 bucks.
Not supposed to say anything.
Oh, whoops, I'm a dead hype person. Um, hold on, I'm going to make a roll official and stuff. Introduction local law number eight of 2020, review referrals by the village board trustees and introductory local law number eight of 2020 entitled local law amending chapter 310 zoning of Dakota Village Woodbury amending section 310-38 while, while wireless telecommunications city.
Great. I, I don't know if, um, if Rick wants to give any lead in, um, just from the legal perspective and the village board perspective.
The reason for this event is the, the other wireless, the present wireless regulations were not a long time ago. There's been a lot of changes in wireless telecommunications technology since that time. Including the introduction more recently of 5G with small cell technology. And there have also been quite a number of FCC rulings in the interim that require that things be done on a more expedited basis. Uh, that's not something that the village can avoid. It's a federal prohibition, and so there are short contracts to get things done and some of those require, um, under certain circumstances that they really avoid a planning overview and others that can have a planning overview, but there was a need for some clarity in the regulations and for updating the regulations. And, uh, Mike Musso, um, was the chief architect of this, along with, uh, H2M in our office, to come up with ways that would go ahead and satisfy the, the legal and tactical aspects and still be workable for the planning. And so the law is, and is presented to you, and then, uh, I don't know if Mike wants to say anything or simply answer your question.
Well, I, I would just say, um, I, I know that you have had the law referred to you, the local law. We're very excited to be at this point, um, and looking towards enacting it. If you like, I can give an overview, um, or maybe I'll just note some of the key edits that are changed. So, um, as Rick had alluded to, really the process of, um, getting applications in, uh, better defining what would need a special permit versus what would need a building permit only. And that resulted in some changes to definitions that are in the code, notably uh, major and minor modifications. So, for example, someone wanting to go in and swap out antennas, if it meets certain criteria, would be a minor change. And that would be, uh, looked at at the building department level only. Now, that's, that's actually been happening. Uh, we've been processing those types of applications, but the code memorializes and documents the reasons behind that. So definitions have been added, um, or tweaked a little bit. Uh, the process, um, we looked to add clarity, although when you read it, there's a lot of arrows in and out and feedback and, uh, different decision points that come up, and we did that on purpose. Um, you know, if Gary gets an application, he says, gee, I'm not sure if this is eligible for a building permit only. There's a process for him to review, for, for instance. So much has been changing over the years, as this board knows. Um, notably, in the fall of 2018, there was an FCC order regarding small cells. And uh, this was looked at near Woodbury Commons several years ago by an infrastructure company. Uh, that was never built out, but the, the trends in wireless, um, as I've been depicting to you guys over the years would be, um, more facilities and probably smaller facilities. So it's a likelihood that small cells will make their way into Woodbury. Um, we're seeing it, um, in other suburban locations, including in the Hudson Valley. So we wanted to be prepared for that. Uh, the preamble in the code, um, looks to identify some of the key FCC rulings on application processing and timing. Uh, the aforementioned small cells and the, um, definitions of significant, non-significant changes, major or minor modifications. So, uh, we did go through the definitions. Um, there's also reference to a chapter 305. Now, this is 31038. 305 has been on the books for a while. It's entitled wire, wireline communications. And we thought about maybe, um, proposing to take that out altogether. However, there's some interesting items in there about franchising. It mentions utility poles, it mentions right of way and small cells and such. Um, all those, all those items, uh, may, may be applicable to it. So we, we added some reference to this other chapter. Uh, we looked at the preferences a little bit. The village board had comments back, um, when we workshop this in January of this year. So we had, um, some tweaking to the, um, uh, the preferential site. Uh, you know, co-location on existing towers or structures is always preferred. And there's about eight, a list of eight with number one being the most preferred, number eight being the least preferred. And we just try to be prescriptive along the way. You know, any new tower, cell tower, um, of course would come for a special permit for a full review. But, uh, with small cells, that could vary a little bit. There's several sections added on those. And, um, with the modifications and co-locations that we see sometimes, um, there's, I think, a little more clarity for the applicant on the process that's needed. But still being considered of the FCC and the, uh, timeframes that are put out there. So that's, that's kind of, um, a, a very broad level, uh, summary of the, of the edits that are proposed. And, um, I, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or, um, or even share some exhibits if, if that's needed.
Thank you, Mike. And like, this is the normal with any local law memo will be drafted to the village board with this board's suggestions, if, right?
That's correct.
I got lots of little blue flagging. Um, okay. On page four, on the distributed, uh, distributed access notes. Uh, it refers to ground level. How do we find ground level? Do we define ground level as from the central line of the street or the curb line?
Um, surrounding grade. So this would be at the base of a tower or, um, right at that pole, if that's what you're looking at, for like a small cell.
Okay.
So it's really surrounding grade.
Page 11, number eight. To me, this, uh, I wrote notes and I want to just make sure I'm just. I, I, this looks like this gives the building inspector the ability to, or the building department, the ability to grant the, the permits um, for these small sites and not refer them to the planning board. Um, personally, me, I think it should be subject to ARB at the very least, uh, just to see if he decides to go in to, um, fit into the community overall. So that's just, uh, my thought on that one section, unless I'm reading it incorrectly.
No, I, I think that you got the tone of it correctly. Um, it, it does note that vast and small cells and they're very, you know, very similar technology, small antennas in this case on right of way utility poles. They would require a building permit if the building inspector doesn't identify reason to refer it. So to your point, if there's something you feel should be added there, um, that does leave a lot of onus on the building inspector. Um, one thing that, um, we would have on file is a set of aesthetic guidelines that would label out what is preferred and what's not preferred. The code does give also some, uh, aesthetic considerations regarding the aggregate volume. Adding up the antenna, there's usually a box on the side of the pole and also a meter, electric meter box. So we do have some things in there. Um, the FCC has laid those out as well, so this is based on that. But what you, what you bring up is interesting. It's kind of in the eye of the beholder, I think, what you're saying. And just to get concurrence of, uh, you know, whether or not there's a significant impact or not. This code hopes, uh, is hoping to pre-screen some of that. But until you get an application, you don't know exactly.
Mike, what is the timeframe on the, the, the? Uh, small cell, um, FCC ruling or making a determination?
Yeah, so Rick, I, I think that one for sixty days for, uh, small cell applications. That's, that's, that's very interesting.
But that, uh, everything would have to be done within sixty days of a complete application. So if you put an application in that satisfied all requirements, you would have, they would have to get a building permit within sixty days. That's the thing, it's difficult to do with these small cells that the timeframe is so short.
Okay.
Um, I think it'd be very difficult to go, kind of go through an ARB process of scheduling a public hearing and, uh, with, well, three meetings a month. The, the other thing that Mike, uh, noted, and by the way, Chris, I took your email response to reference on the, there were um, aesthetic guidelines that, um, they had come up with, that Mike has come up with, that the board will be considering. So then, that may impact that in fact we have these aesthetic considerations that may not be the same kind of need for an ARB review, we can tell ahead of time. This is what has to look like.
Okay.
And will it get into that kind of detail, Mike? I think they look at, they throw a look at the, um, aesthetic guidelines that you had.
Yeah. Good to see my screen. So, um, in that small cell order, the 2018 order that I spoke about, which, which by the way, is still being litigated by a number of cities around the country. They're, um, disputing things exactly like what we just spoke about is timing. Um, if antennas are in the local right of way, not a state, they are county right of way, you know, the management consideration and the fees. So that officially has not, I think it's in the Ninth Circuit. It hasn't been finalized right now. But one of the things that it did prescribe is that municipal, it encouraged municipalities to put something together like this. But one of the things that it did prescribe is that municipal, it encouraged municipalities to put something together like this. And then it gives some photos. Uh, you know, the, 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 the different designs. Get mental, tell us what that is, and then also. Put in some of the best practices, always referring back to three, ten, thirty eight. But the idea is that if somebody's coming in, thinking about putting an application in a co-location, this would be, uh, this document. When finalized would, would be in the building department and would give them a bit more of a roadmap on the aesthetics. You know, um, this is twenty-two First Avenue, actually. Um, I think a lot of you worked on this several years ago, the APC now Tarpon Tower. It's actually a pretty good example of stealth tree. Um, so things for the stealth tree are in here, such as taper and density of branching. Um, color matching the pole. The antennas and visible equipment, including socks for the antennas that go in. It'll have a unique maintenance plan, you know, a stealth tree is different than a flare. So, so that's, um, that's kind of the companion document that we could, I think would be a really good idea. In the building department. And three, ten, thirty-eight, just as my reference, this document gives a little bit of knowledge that come out and other lessons learned. Um, this document could certainly be updated over time.
So Chris, um, with that, can I?
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I think you're right. Um, I guess we'll try my, that comment. Um, eighteen, page eighteen, section twenty-one, uh, pre-application meeting, is that with the building department or with the planning board?
Um, just pop in there. Twenty-one.
I'm eighteen.
Page eighteen, item twenty-one.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think this section, let me just go back up. Is specific to, um, building permits only. Um, no, no, I take that back. That would be a special permits also. Um, this would be, um, and that's been in the, the code for, for a while. We just fine tuned some of that language. So that, that could absolutely be with, um, uh, the planning board as well, especially if it's something going to a, uh, going to a special use permit.
Typically, um, lately this board doesn't have pre-application meetings. Um, so I just, I worry about that being written into the law. It almost binds us to having that meeting. The pre-application meetings, as you know, Rick, this board doesn't usually have pre-apps at meetings anymore. So with it being written into the law, it was bound just more into having that pre-application meeting now.
You would like.
You, you, you know, my feeling, whatever you said in front of the person in front of the.
Mike, did you hear that?
Uh, yes, we're still on that page eighteen, number twenty-one.
This and generally, Westwood, the chairman, I think he would rather not have any pre-application whatsoever.
Yeah.
And wireless, I think in the whole, I don't know, I can't recall. Uh, there was a requirement.
Yeah. And you know, we, uh, go have that. It doesn't constitute a complete application and that's a big deal now in the FCC world, um, when the clocks start. But, um, I, I can understand if, if it's just not, you know, just something that the planning board's not doing anymore. I, I would, I would encourage it. I think we could, you know, if we could add something like, um, if agreed to by the board, you know, it was just something that I. It's helped out over time. I'll give you a, for instance, on that is, um, uh, the image I had up at twenty-two First Avenue, the stealth tree that this board examined, uh, in detail for a long time, a few years ago. It's been built. Um, AT&amp;T came to a pre-application meeting. With a conceptual plan for a new tower on Longview Farms Road. And they, they bought a sketch map. They bought one of their drawings. And they gave a little narrative about the height and where it would go. Uh, there were wetlands on the property. There were setback issues. But we were able to talk to them there and start the process of having them co-locate. On this tower that they knew nothing about. Uh, they didn't know anything about that APC tower. So, you know, that, it, it's never a magic bullet that's going to make a tower go away, of course, but it can get the conversation going a little bit. And, um, you know, I, I would advocate to, to leave it in respectfully, if that's something that, um, the board would entertain on wireless facilities.
Why, why do we have a clock? Why do we, why are we pushed with this clock? We keep talking about a clock.
Yeah.
Why, why is this health power different than other projects?
Well, i- i- and that's really the rub and Rick could add to this, but the, the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission. Has over the years mandated timeframes. Um, the wireless industry, the carriers, the infrastructure companies have said, you know, we are getting bogged down on applications and we have this impetus, this directive to deploy our technology and bandwidth. That's becoming more critical to them with five G that we hear about. That will be some, at some point coming into our area. So the tough thing, and you know, we only consult for municipalities, obviously, um, the company that I work for. But, um, it, it doesn't fit always with SECR. It doesn't always fit with planning board schedules and meetings and forums and things like that. But all the municipalities now across the country really have to work with the shock clocks. For, uh, respond, being responsive, uh, about completeness of applications. And then, uh, you know, playing things out in the zoning process. I, I think Rick could attest over the last couple of years that the applicant representatives. Who, you know, are based in New York and they do things other than wireless, but they represent wireless carriers. They're certainly becoming more aggressive about that and leaning on the federal law.
But shouldn't the applicant come to us with a completed application then if they want us to review it in sixty days?
Yeah. So the, the clocks can be told or stopped or frozen in time. Um, when an application is received. Uh, if the response comes back quick enough within a shorter period of time. Um, where from a technical basis, we could ask for additional information. Then the clock doesn't restart. And it could take the applicant weeks or even months to respond to that. But from that point, you know, there might be six, eight days elapsed. But then the clock is frozen and it won't restart again until there's a, a completeness determination. Um, that may sound like, oh yeah, great. This is wonderful, but it's still a lot of onus on the municipalities. Um, even with the, the stopping or the tolling of the shock clocks, it's still very tough.
That answer your question, Joe?
Well, it sounds like with the clock and pause, I don't know if there's really a clock now.
There's definitely a clock.
Yeah.
And the clock starts as soon as it, then the application comes in. And then it's required within a very short period of time. Um, I think it's ten days. Um, but I, I can't be sure, but it's a short period of time. That the municipality has to look at the application. And then respond in writing with all the deficiencies specifically. And if they do that, whatever timing it is, I can call it the initial one, whether it's ten days or twenty days, but it's a short time. And then, um, the clock stops and you go ahead and do it right. Or if you miss it by a day, then, then it never gets told. And you have to have everything done, including issuing the building permit. And if it requires a variance, it also includes the whole GBA variance process. And that is every approval that the municipality has, not just each individual boards collectively for the municipality. Everything has to be done within that shot. And that's governed by federal law and every municipality in the country has to.
Okay, federal law. Um, the, do we provide like green zones where these towers can go ahead of time? And then that, would that help speed up the process? I mean, I, I think there's going to be a lot of people that are not going to want towers in their backyard, whether it be short or, or, or tall. So is there a, like, I don't know, comprehensive master plan or something that says towers could go here?
Well, that's a, that's an interesting question and I think, um, the case law over time. Um, you know, you, we, we can't say, you, you, you can't locate it in the village of Woodbury. Can't, you can't do that. It would be nice, but, um, that of course won't play out. There is a preference of, of eight different categories of locations that are in the code. Some of those have been tweaked a little bit. So they do try to lay out a preference, um, of, of a hierarchy. And I think it's inherent that if they go to a very low preference site. As a proposal, they have to do a lot more work to justify why they can't go to a, a more preferred site. So, um, that.
I'll give you that as an example. Um, both Mike and I right now actually are dealing in connection with a cell tower going up in the town of New Falls. Town of New Falls has a fairly narrow strip of its own. Next to the thruway in which they say, hey, this is the only place you could put cell towers, not in the residential areas. And what happens is it comes along from the whole nine towers. And Verizon, and they say, well, that's fine that you say this, but that's not going to be our coverage. So we can't put it there. And then what they have to do is they have to get a public utility barriers. Uh, from the CBA that says whatever site they pick, which is in a residential area. Um, that meets our coverage gap. And as long as it meets our coverage gap, and there's no other place that's better than that. Then we have a right to put it there. And then they could make anything regardless. I think the, the method that we have in Woodbury, which is what Mike was talking about, the hierarchy, it's much more protective of the.
Mike, can we keep a current, um, tower, cell tower star and as part of anything proposed?
Um, you know, that's, that's a great idea. Um, I'm just going to share my screen again because I do have an exhibit. Oh, where are you? Sorry, bear with me.
But if you have a map of all of them, it's something you can send to the building department, I think is what's said, right?
Yeah, because I mean, when you talk about the small cells and, and, you know, then going into galleries or building permits. I think it would be great to have something almost like, you know, with, with, uh, full contact so that we're always aware of where, where these are going.
Yeah. So, um, that was Sandra, I think. This, this could be updated a little bit, but this map. When we started on the code edits or, or red lines. And that's exactly what we needed to know. So you could see the, uh, the First Avenue site. Is way up, uh, off of Seven Springs Roads, Scunnamunk area. There's an old tower up in Sid, Sid Felder Lane. I think Verizon's up there. Um, Verizon and AT&amp;T are now on this First Avenue one. Cemetery of the Highlands houses all of the carriers plus MTA. And then, you know, you could see down here, there was a mobility approach, mobility was the small cell proposal near Woodbury Commons. Um, Woodbury Commons, I'll tell you, this is one of the best stealthing examples in the area. But in the cupula, in the barn building. There's a facility, a T-Mobile facility actually. And known or whatever, no, it's there. Yeah, the lane is a popular one, Arden House Road up, up on the hill, has all the drears. So it's actually under construction as we speak. So, um, yeah, I think, um, I like that suggestion a lot, that it, it just would be really good for Gary. And he and I talk about these a lot. You know, he deals with, uh, either expired permits or, you know, other things or inspections associated with these. Um, it, it's a nice running map, but, but you could, it's interesting. You could kind of see the trail or. Um, Woodbury Commons get a huge amount of traffic seasonally in a different times of the year. So, yeah, this is one of the key aspects when we were started doing the red lines. We wanted to see land use. We wanted to see where sensitive receptors were. And, you know, that helped us confirm this, uh, ranking of sites. Um, you know, that, that are, that are out there in the code now. Yes, yeah. Um, so that's all codified now. There's a bit, building permit application. And it's, it's clear now in the code what needs to be provided. It's not, you know, somebody with a crayon filling out the form and saying, you know, we're constructing tomorrow. We asked for, uh, many things, uh, to be updated, um, radio frequency emissions report that's on file. Sometimes I ask for justification if it's not clear technically why they need to swap out or do something or co-locate. If there's a co-location, meaning if there's a rooftop site or a tower site. Where Verizon is not there yet, for, for example. If they're the co-locating there for the first time, they have to provide, uh, much additional information. It still might, uh, be qualify as a non-substantial change. Or minor modification, but we always want that information on the file. So, so the bill, building department is very much aware of anything that's going on.
Don't they still have to prove the?
Yeah, for co-, for co-location, uh, coverage maps. Um, and the things that the planning board has looked at over time that justified the, the need. Um, that would be reviewed, but at the building permit process, so. Um, with that information, it's still maybe in a file somewhere and it still would, would get the necessary review.
Okay, back for a second to what Chris was talking about, you know, you, you answered that, that, that it can be some good things come out. I think that Chris and other times, other planning board members as well have said. Those same types of things can come out at a meeting before the planning. And, um, I think they're showing a preference not to have pre-application meetings, but have all the meetings before the planning.
Is that right? Yes.
So I'll put down here, and that'll be up to the order trustee to determine, but I will put down here for this law generally. That, uh, to eliminate all pre-application, um, aspects in this new wireless law.
Well, that's, that's what I was kind of getting at. If, if Gary's got like a fluid map going where he's updating what towers have, whatever. Then if somebody comes in with an application. It's almost like he can, he can give them all that information right from that map. So a lot of the aspects of pre-application may not even be necessary. If, if he, you know, he can look at the grid map and say, well, you know, you want to put it here, but this tower here only has one. User right now, so maybe that's where we should go instead of, now I'm talking about.
How often do these applications come in? Just my own knowledge, as far as, you know, carries want to put new towers in the area.
Well, um, just going back to that map that I had up. Um, the last tower, new tower that was looked at was eleven Abrams. Um, the one before that new tower was at twenty-two First Avenue, uh, way up on the ridge. Those were two new towers in five years.
Okay.
How, but the upgrades that happen, you know, the, the application to, to Gary. Um, we typically help him process, uh, anywhere from four to, four to eight a year in terms of upgrades.
That's up, that's upgrades on existing towers.
Correct. Yes, that would be building permit only. Yep.
Abrams wasn't a sixty day clock though, was it?
Yes. We had, we had a couple pauses in there, but we, we met the deadline. That was one of the new rules. I think that was the first tower that came in under the new shock clock rules.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, it could, it, it could have been, um, chairman. And I remember that and I'm sure Rick too, that there were several points. And discussions with the applicant representative about agreeing to toll the clock. And they were respectful regarding, um, SECR and public hearing requirements. I mean, all those things take time. And I think the fact that this board showed that, you know, they weren't unduly delaying anything. I think that was a key thing.
Very important. Um, but it, it's not like a guest clock, um, at least now. And that's because, for the most part, the applicants that have come before us. Um, if they see, and if they do this with other boards too, if they see that the boards are trying to attend to them and not trying to delay them. But it looks like it's going to take a little bit longer. They don't rush the court to try to sue us, right? And fortunately, and this issue came up because the cell towers wanted this, the cell company wanted this, the carrier. Which was that if you missed the shock clock, they get an automatic default approval, right? That was not agreed to by the FCC. And they reiterated that, um, in, in their most recent ruling that they had. So that you don't have the word under default approval. But also, you know, you don't want to tempt that to be running into court and then the village has to spend money defending. but also, you know, you don't want to attempt that to be running into court and then the village has to spend money defending. But like, we're still in court and the court turns around and they get it on an expedited basis. Um, and they go in order that to prove it within a very short period of time anyway. So it's, but the experience we've had with the carriage before us, if I can correctly, if I'm wrong, is that as long as the board is moving forward on it, um, even if you're not meeting the shot clock, they're willing to go ahead and work with it. If there are some issues, these places or carriers or representatives of the carrier are willing at appropriate times to enter into these shot clock tolling agreements. But for the most part, we usually don't need them if you are on top of determining what their problems are with an incomplete application and you're moving forward with it once they have an incomplete application. Um, as Mike said, even allowing some a little bit longer SECA process and other things with respect to visual impacts usually is the biggest thing. The whole radio frequency emissions for the tower, that has been determined to be not something that you're allowed to consider whatsoever. In fact, it was a recent court case that where the board did, the board denied the cell tower didn't cite as one of the reasons for the radio frequency emissions. However, that's all that the board talked about and that's all that the public talked about. So the court said, well, you did not it for these other reasons, which don't really make sense. And so we think that the real reason that you deny it is supposed to be because of the emissions. So we're going to overturn it and they get approved. So you're really wasting your time. In fact, hurting yourself because there's a good reason to deny it. But all when you're talking about emissions, then you risk having the court say, well, I mean, why are you denying it? It's just a pretext. So whenever the emissions issue comes up, you should be telling them or I will tell by the public that the board isn't allowed to consider that information. And although there's arguments saying that the science that was relied upon by the FCC to come up with the levels that are acceptable are outdated better newer science. Um, their venue to get that change is either the FCC or Congress because Congress says if you don't meet the FCC emissions, then, um, I mean, as long as you you, whatever the FCC says is preempted, localized. And so the FCC is saying, well, the emissions are in this range, it's fine. So you have to get one of those two bodies to go ahead and correct that. You can't correct them on local level and just otherwise tank a valid denial that you make. So moving on, I'll I'll make that comment to order trustees with respect to preapplication.
Thanks, Rick.
Uh, twenty-four, number two. Type it as a type two action on the SECA. I mean, I know it's silly, but what happens if they decide to change the type of action? Then we got to go back and rewrite the law. I mean, typically, didn't they just a year or two ago, did some of the SECA definitions change? With retrospect, what's a type one, type two, unlisted action?
Yes, they have, they changed in 2019.
So I just, to have it hardcoded into a law, I don't know if it's really needed typically. Uh, page twenty-four, number two.
I think that's a good point, right? See, if you want to be a type two, it's not going to be type two regardless of what it says in the law.
Right. I just hate to have to go back to the village spend money to change the law because they decided to change definitions or something.
Would it be type two or or unlisted?
Who knows? It's what Chris is saying is that theoretically, I don't think it's going to happen. They could determine it to be type one. So what what what's the purpose of saying that it's a type two action?
Well, well, this particular item, it's specific to the building permit only for minor modifications, co-locations or the other small cells that qualify under the code. So it it is an interesting point in that the building inspector is not a SECA lead agency, I don't think. And, you know, whether or not a SECA short form needs or should should be submitted for that, I can't remember if we have that. But what I wanted to put in here was something that would essentially memorialize that. Somebody looking at this code and says, oh, yeah, for a new cell tower, a special permit, it's it's clear this is going to be going through SECA. There's visual assessments. Uh, there's many other potential assessments like wetlands or something else. So it is an interesting point. The item here is meant to be specific to just lay out something in a blanket way, but I I appreciate if type two would not be an automatic for those building permits.
I just don't think it really necessarily adds anything here. I mean, if you're going to be a type two or not on those different regulations. And what we've done before is try not to put something specific by way of reference when you can avoid to another law that may be changed and then all of a sudden your law is out of date. I just don't see the need for for that particular permission. I mean, Jared can know the type two action. And I think anybody coming in for these, you're going to have to know that as well.
Yeah, it was just a minor thing. I just picked up on it, just.
Well, I'll put a comment in here that I believe that it may be appropriate not to make specific reference to the type of actions.
Yeah, and I'll I'll follow how that plays out, Rick, with you. You know, just when Gary's processing a building permit, uh, and maybe maybe you could answer this now, but think of other types of applications that go in for a building permit. It's likely that there was some SECA, maybe not for a resident, but there were some residential development, but there was some SECA that was done. I just want to make sure that we have something uh, on the books and maybe that's a submittal then of a of a short form just so we have something in terms of SECA on upgrades, on co-locations and things. It's an interesting point. It really is.
Uh, keeping on page twenty-four, number four, the building department may refer minor modifications. I know prior to this, it lists out like a lot of different. Uh, I'm on twenty-four, number four.
Number four, yeah.
Building department may refer minor modification. Now, I I the text before kind of, um, spells out, I guess, what a minor modification would be, but what what triggers the may? That's what I'm getting at. When do they and when don't they need to refer a minor modification?
I think that is Gary's determination, like it says here, where if he wants some recommendations from planning board because of the visual impact proximity to sensitive receptors. So it's it's really going to be locations and if I can make saying, oh, normally so this is a really visually impacting area, but let me go and get the replication.
Now, what about if if this was to fall into like Ridgeline preservation? Would that automatically invoke a referral to planning board?
I don't know.
I don't know. Certainly, again, certainly for a new tower, always that would go first, planning board review. But if that tower is built at some point, um, that would be one of the things that Gary would be able to think about and and refer. Uh, that could be a sensitive receptor, maybe in itself of its location.
I the the may, you know, ten, I don't know, words to me that, um, I'm a guru with this. I just made up a word tonight. I don't know. I like definitions around, you know, when things need to go, when they don't.
I I would prefer that too, absolutely, but, you know, this is this is really hard to prescribe for any instance that might come along. But, you know, I I hear you. It is a bit ambiguous. It gives it gives Gary some leeway, but I think that leeway may be may be important at times that he could, uh, he could do a referral.
There are times when you you want to have that discretion because the alternative is to try to have a huge wonder list of what you must do. And then you have to figure out all the visual impact areas in the building where you would want to see. And then they change all the time. And upon new development that goes in, some misses changed. So what this does is say that Gary would consider that which this may have a bigger impact. Now, maybe you'll miss one, right? But the alternative is to get so overly cumbersome and detailed in the law that I think would be self-easing.
Okay. What you said makes sense. I just asked it with one of my notes.
Good, good questions and I really appreciate it. Yeah.
Yeah, I actually read all like sixteen pages.
I I love it.
Um, twenty-seven, section K, number two.
Page twenty-seven.
Section K visibility of facilities, number two.
One sec, yeah.
Um, just my reading of it, it seems like it takes the option away for like a tree pole. It must be galvanized finish or painted with rust, red, the paint. Like it doesn't say we can have a tree pole or a flagpole. Does that limit us here by saying it has to be of a galvanized finish or painted?
I think that's a great point. So I think the point was that, you know, look, all towers, they should have the right type of industrial coatings, rust prevented. And it really should be a matted finish, galvanized as utilitarian gray like utilities.
Right.
So you're exactly right. Over at Abrams right now, that's going to be a a dark gray pole, thunder gray. Um, that's not galvanized. So, yeah, I think that should be, that's a good catch. I think that should be changed to a matted finish.
And then it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't preclude having a tree pole or a stealth, I'm sorry, a stealth pole, right?
Right.
Okay, because it doesn't mention it. So I don't, you know, it just, to me, it reads to be to have a galvanized or painted and that's it. It has to harmonize.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to prescribe that they're going to be gray, galvanized. Um, but but a matte finish and with the right type of painting, that's I would suggest changing the word gap, galvanized to a matted finish, non-reflective.
How do we enlarge this to also include a tree pole? One, because that's not going to be that being a matte finish.
Yeah, a matted finish. Yep. So, right, that would cover whatever color or maybe even a a texture that the planning board would prescribe.
Right, but what about look? Flagpole, make it look like a spruce tree, make it look like a pine tree, make it look like a dead tree.
Cactus.
Yeah, one of those. I I just saying that wording to me seems to preclude giving the any options other than paint color.
Yeah, I I agree with that.
And I have my other questions answered with the preapplication. Okay. I've monopolized everybody's time.
Oh, you asked all my questions.
I'm usually still the way around.
I really appreciate, you know, the time of this board on this, so it's wonderful. Thank you.
So I was saying, does a power company have, they can place a antenna on the utility pole, let's say the carriers, what equipment do they have as far as design, appearance of it? Or who denies the sale of the utility pole?
Yeah, um, I I think I understand the uh, the question, Robert. Um, when we were looking to add definitions on small cells, we really looked closely at what the FCC and also some of the surrounding case law in the area regarding citing on right of ways. And there's, I think, very clear on state right of ways. And there's a few of them that you have that run through, obviously the thruway. Uh, that runs through, comes to mind initially, immediately Route thirty-two. Um, those might be areas where small cells are attractive and there's just not a lot that the municipalities can review on those. We try to put in a a batch of applications, meaning they can only submit so many nodes in a single application at one time. Um, you know, we think that's a smart way to go. However, if you remember a few years ago, there was a small cell proposal, one node near Woodbury Common, and that was in a village right of way. So we tried to make some distinctions on what would be needed, uh, village right of ways versus state or county. Um, and also with regards to going on existing wooden poles, which if it's possible, the carriers like to do that uh, versus putting in new poles, new wooden poles. And, you know, we're seeing both types of things um, in nearby municipalities with that. So village right of way, new pole would be a special permit that would go in front of you. Um, but just keep in mind with small cells, there could be instances that are in the state right of ways or on existing poles that would not necessarily go in for a special permit.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't want to move on. Under, under definitions where it says applicant or there's another definition for person, could that also be municipality that all land within your village? Could they also qualify as an applicant or a person?
Meaning that can the village of Woodbury?
Let's say that another village that was land within your boundaries. And then they wanted to have a cell, cell tower in a carrier place, a cell tower that would benefit that in their municipality.
The answer is yes, although it probably is a good idea to enlarge it. First of all, very rarely is a person, an individual or person who submits any of these things. It's always an entity. Um, and that would also include any other municipal entity. So we can put in here any person or entity submitting an application. I think that would be good. But even without it, entities would be able to, entities are the ones that normally supply anyway. And that wouldn't include any type of municipal entity as well.
It'd be more specific in a sense.
Yeah, we we can say any person or entity submitting an application.
Okay. There's any?
Maybe. Uh, Tommy or Joe?
I'm okay at this point.
Joe?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Uh, that's it, right, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Sure. I appreciate it again. Thank you for the board's attention to this.
Thank you for your, for your hard work and I know it's been a long time and a lot of, a lot of effort for this.
Yeah, well, appreciate the opportunity. I think it's I think it's going to be, um, I think it's going to be helpful on a lot of fronts, so I'm happy to do it and we'll see if we could implement it at some point in the not-too-distant future together.
All right, thank you, everybody. All right, with that, uh, I want for motion to close.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want to stay here? All in favor?
Hi.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you.